I'll forget by tomorrow. I'll press delete or something.
We will resume. Thank you all. Laura?
Thank you, Mayor. So I had just completed my staff recommendation and I was taking questions from council members.
Okay, sounds good, Council. Noel?
So I noticed on the last slide where it mentioned that Grace Avenue would have to be developed, would that be if it was only the furthest northern lot?
Yep, you can see it right here, and this is lot one, so it's the northernmost lot, and should access come to this lot through Grace, then Grace Avenue will have to be developed.
All the way through or just to his property line?
I think we would deal with that when the application comes in. It would probably be similar to what we did for the Red Baron, which is all the way through.
Really?
But we would assess that when we deal with the application.
I missed that part, because I was watching Netflix over there.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. And would the city help pick up that part of it with our fund? Don't we have a fund?
There would be capital fees, again, similar to what we've done in the past, and capital fees would be credited to the applicant because he's improving the road, and so we wouldn't double charge him.
But we're not doing that yet.
Not with this application, again, with residential development, and they're not even accessing off of Grace Avenue. There's no requirement to improve Grace Avenue at all.
No, but I know Mr. Waters, he's up to something. He's up to something. Let's bring him up and see what he's up to.
Come on up, Dean.
Dean Waters, 130 Montana Vista. And I'll just tell you upfront what I'm up to, so. We plan on building three small houses on each of these three lots. Not tiny, but small, 1,100 square feet, single car garages. We're going to stagger the three of them. We're not even going to think about driving on Gray Street, so it's all yours, Noel. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Well, it's probably a question for Kip. Are there two water taps there now or no water taps?
There are no water taps on either of the lots. So we'll be going into Boundary Street with water and sewer is our... Boundary Street has water, sewer, gas, everything.
And how many residential water taps are in our pool right now?
For the year, eighty. I think we've sold eight to date. And then, I'd just like to make a little comment. Mr. Waters is very aware, because he's been on the UAC for a lot of years. I always caution council to any kind of increase. However, here, it's a unique situation because it's community commercial. So a commercial establishment could have came in and used more water than a single-family house. We're just adding one here. It's fairly small, but whenever we increase densities, I think, you'll see that from me.
But that was your only concern?
Correct.
Do you have... I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Do you... I'm just looking at this, and I see the erosion of traffic going across here, and I see K and K, and I see it going up in there. Do you have any concerns about this off-use of Grace right away?
Well, other than Grace, I can't address that for K and K, but the other erosion you see is a driveway that'll go away that was
That's right.
kind of historical driveway coming off of Boundary Street. So that'll go away with new homes being built.
And they said K and K has their entrance to Baldwin, or they could. I don't think they do.
They have.
Would they continue to use Grace, the dirt, you think?
Probably, yeah. Assume so.
Yes.
They have to have for forever, a long time.
Well, Dean, we need this kind of housing in town, so congratulations. I'm sure you're not going to have any problem marketing those. What other comments do we have before we go to the audience?
Because you talked about the vegetation there and saving trees and all of that of this developer, is that right away a legal usage for this business up here, K and K? I'm assuming, and I'm not making accusations, that they're doing it, but I'm assuming that that, and if they have a right of way from Baldwin, are you concerned about that situation?
I'm not concerned about it. I would assume it's a legal right of way, just for the fact it's a public street that happens to be undeveloped, but it is a
Yeah, excellent.
public ownership, if that's the right word.
I appreciate you answering that, but I'm actually asking the city.
Oh, okay.
It's legal non-conforming. It's not to city standards, but it is a grandfathered use that's been there. So until they modify or propose to modify the K and K service property, then they will be required to upgrade if there's a substantial improvement.
What do they use it for? What do they use it for, K and K?
It's a garage and a maintenance area for them, all contained within the building.
Thank you.
So the development of this property will not require improvements to Grace?
John? Will these three units look alike?
Yes, they're all going to be the same, the same plan.
Same plan?
We'll be changing colors. We're going to be staggering them from a setback, front setback, so they won't dissolve three V in a row. But the blueprint, the plans are the same.
Do you have price points for these units?
Well, we're currently getting them bid out by subcontractors and whatnot.
Do you have a target?
We have a target in the... We want to be in the low twos, that's for darn sure.
1,100 square feet?
Yeah. What time? We'll see.
When do you anticipate you'll be completing, assuming everything goes your way?
Well, we're thinking of starting the first one probably in two months. And we're deciding now, we haven't decided yet, if we're going to do all three at once or do one at a time.
But they will, excuse me, they'll be spec homes?
Yes, yes. Spec homes for sale, not rentals or anything.
Anybody else? Public comment? Do we have anybody here who'd like to comment? Okay, if not, we'll call for motion to consider Dean's request.
I will reconsider motion to... I don't know exactly how to phrase it, but I'm...
As written?
As written. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second.
There we go. Suzanne?
I'll take it.
So, Mayor?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Dean. Laura, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have one item of new business tonight, possibly two, and we'll move on with Mr. Butter.
Thanks, Mayor. At the April 20th council meeting, the city council directed the staff to prepare a resolution to dissolve, disband, and terminate the Vehicle Usage Review Committee. That resolution has been prepared. It's in your council packet as Resolution Number 816. And Mayor, I'll turn it back to you for the discussion.
Okay, sounds good. Val and John, why don't you lead this discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the back are some copies of this little... It's a statement of facts to date, sort of a kind of a brief summary of where we're at to this point. Back in January, we had a council vote to create a committee. Four to three was the vote for. And we, the council at that time, thought it was a good idea to do some investigation. We tried to do some things to limit impact on staff. You can read some of those things in this thing. I'm not going to read this whole thing. I'll just hit some highlights. If anybody's interested in what's on this page, it's available in the back. So, our focus in the Vehicle Usage Review Committee was to focus on studying cost efficiency hypotheses of alternate city vehicle utilization methods and practices. So some of those we were going to look at were under utilization of several vehicles of a class. We're going to combine like-vehicle functions to lesser vehicles, possibly. These are all data analysis points we needed to investigate whether these had any validity in fact or not. Validate personal use versus my reimbursement for personal private owner vehicles, evaluating multiples vehicles, multiple employee shuttling to work sites, and evaluate emergency requirements for optimization alternatives. And we, so we started the process. The logs were put together by the committee, modified by the city for other purposes, and we headed off into gathering data. We got some of the first data back and couldn't read a lot of it, so we decided we needed to create a little cheat book for people looking at the analysis. And we, so we volunteered to go out and take pictures of vehicles, so we might be able to decipher some of those entries without impacting city staff. My intent, leading that committee, was always to minimize city staff's impact, because they have important work to do for the city, and outside of data logging, which is consuming to a certain extent. But it's, there's no, there's no easy way around it. There's no easy digital method to do those things. So we created that book. That book is completely done. A couple of us finished it yesterday, and there's no more effort involved by the city or anybody else. So there, right now, we have some two and a half months of data, that book. We also have noticed in analyzing the data that there are certain vehicles that are very repetitive, almost 100% usage. Some of us think that we can eliminate taking any more data from those, because, you know, it's not going to prove anything. That will eliminate a tremendous load on those people from constantly writing the same entry over and over and over again. That's just practical, common sense. And if you want to read further detail, like I say, the sheet's in the back. It's been, it's been a useful exercise, we think. We've seen some interesting preliminary data, and I would hand it over to council member Schaefer at this point, if you'd like. Thank you.
By way of background, this committee was established by council at a January meeting, as I recall. Val is, or has been, the chairman of the committee. I am a committee member. Darwin Nakarado, who's in the audience, is also a member. And our city manager, David Butter, he was an ex-official member of the committee. And we will be voting here shortly on the resolution which would, in fact, dissolve the committee. City manager and staff people have invested time and energy in filling out these logs. We have gone through a few of those, certainly not all, and I think the city and the council is entitled to some preliminary results, and that's what I'm going to discuss now. The approach we took in putting a sample together, excuse me, we used March data. We selected 12 vehicles, and those vehicles belong to, or are in fact driven by, City Hall, Fleet Maintenance, Public Works, and Streets, Water Plant, and Wastewater Plant. Assumption was made that the, an average work day runs from eight o'clock in the morning to five o'clock in the afternoon. We did notice in going over the logs that some staff folks were out early on snow days, as early as four o'clock. Others come in routinely at 6:30, so those hours were added to the data. Each vehicle has its own spreadsheet, and what we've done, what I've done primarily, is look at the minutes that are indicated in the log for a particular task it's done. Where they get in the car, or the vehicle go to the work site, get done, come back. They also were indicating odometer readings as well. And so the baseline that we've established to this point is on that 12-vehicle sample. Page three shows what I call data results. And so what we were trying to determine is out of a normal workday, which is nine hours, 540 minutes, how much of that time is actually spent traveling to and from, as well as the time spent at the job site getting done whatever needs to be done. And so as I look at those 12 vehicles, and I'm showing the departments for each, and I try to spread that kind of distribution so that we're looking at vehicles that are involved in all kinds of activities. And then when I look at the total time that the vehicle is in use, compare that to the total time in the day, I get what I call a percentage usage of the total workday. Interesting, as I look at those numbers, all 12 are less than 50%. So this says, for those vehicles, the 12, that they were involved in the job, you know, getting to and from, and the vehicle sat idle more than 50% of the time for each one of these 12 vehicles. And I have a graphic that shows, looking at the 12 vehicles, that the usage rate is 28% on average. 28%. So 72% of the time, the rest of the time for the workday, the vehicle is sitting. So I'm showing, yeah, what's not used and what is used. And this surprised me, frankly, as I look at how these vehicles are used and the time involved in many of these tasks. And these logs, in some cases, were as few as two sheets, or the two sides of one sheet, and 12 sheets on another vehicle. It was constantly in motion, as seen, but yet did not exceed 50%. So the point I would make is that I look at this trend for 12 vehicles, I see opportunities which ought to allow us at some point, assuming the trend that we see here in the sample continues throughout. And so this was only looking at March data. We now have April data, and I don't know whether we have any May data yet. Nonetheless, I also discovered one vehicle for one month requires one hour of my time to do this analysis, collect the data, and massage it, so that I come up with a usage percentage. This would seem to me to offer some potential for managing the vehicle fleet differently. And frankly, as I look at this small sample size, admittedly, it seems like there ought to be an opportunity in the air for some kind of a motor pool. I don't know what the rest of the data would tell us. Frankly, we just haven't taken the time to look at it. But, as a council, we're being asked to, do we want to decide to dissolve this committee? I didn't mention the costs. We got an estimate from the city manager that, I think for the month of March, that city staff invested sufficient time looking at their salaries and the time they spent entering data or doing anything else with it. $999 a month. So the question was discussed at the last meeting. That's a lot of money. $1,000. So if we run this committee as was originally chartered for a year, significant funds. If we could do the analysis and collection of the data and come to some reasonable conclusion in fewer than a year, fewer months, four months, for example, what would we learn from that? And is that investment of $1,000 a month for four months, $4,000, if we can find or determine and get agreement that we may be able to save a couple of vehicles, at least, it would be a payback on that to make sense to me. That's my summary, and those are the preliminary results, and we'll certainly do whatever the council decides we ought to be doing.
This vehicle 58, you said it was Public Works. Can you give me a little more info on that vehicle, so I can look at my calculations?
Let me look to Val to do that. What vehicle is that? The last sheet is a spreadsheet, and this is for vehicle 58.
I got it right here.
Yeah.
I can tell you that it's a, it's a Streets vehicle. It's one of the Chevy Colorados.
Okay.
And then I've got other descriptions for all the other ones as well.
Because immediately when I started running the numbers and I took averages, this person's driving 2.24 hours out of an eight-hour workday. That's a lot of driving, if I take 28% of the eight hours. So my first thought was, oh, this person's in the vehicle a lot. Maybe we can make that more efficient. They're not in the vehicle as much. Maybe there's more of a pattern. The other thought was, is location. If you want a motor pool, you have to figure out where the vehicles are going to be in location around town to motor vehi... to even share. So I even thought of a, you would have to have a GPS to see if, if someone's going to borrow this Chevy Colorado, they would have to be at the same place that the next person needs to share it to swap the ride. I'm still processing the data, but I see a lot of issues here.
But incidentally, vehicle 58
Right.
On an average day, rolls 31 miles.
I have 22 miles. Oh, okay, well.
John, I have a question.
Oh, because you did, I did 31 days and you did 29.
I have a question for John and Val.
Yeah.
You have collected dat... data in April, and you're processing that.
Yeah.
My question then to David is, if you had this information through April, would it be of value to you in assessing, or es... really, this is all about prepping for next year's budget, and efficiencies down the line. Would the March data and the April data provide you any, any benefit?
It's a tough question. I didn't establish the committee. It would really be council's purview and the committee's purview to take that data and then have council review it to see if it's of value. The 12, I'm not sure if the 12 were just, it's a cross-section that you chose, John, because it was less than 50% usage or not?
No.
Okay. It was just a sample that you grabbed?
It's the order in which I got the logs.
Okay.
58 happened to be on top. And so I've got, you know, I certainly showed you the data for each of the 12 vehicles, but yeah, there was no cherry picking, no attempting to say, okay.
No, no, I wasn't thinking that. I just wondered if you had a criteria for picking these, and you've, you've explained it.
Yeah.
The, let me, if I could just go down the list, because the devil isn't many times in the details. For example, vehicle number 09 is a Parks Buildings and Grounds Colorado. And remember that we indicated to the committee and to the council in a previous report, I think it was the December 8 work session, where we had a full description of the vehicles. This particular vehicle we have for our seasonal workers in Parks Buildings and Grounds, there are five of those that come on every summer, and they, we then plus up with our staff, and that vehicle is dedicated to them. It is used infrequently for certain things, but, so 09, actually beginning this month, will be used as heavily as any other Parks Buildings and Grounds vehicle, but it, it's so that we have it for that seasonal use.
But, but number nine, if you, if you look, I said there was only three days of use.
Correct.
Yeah.
No, understand, but beginning now, very soon, because we've recently hired four of our five seasonals, it will be used every day to go to mow or to take care of flowers or to do those things that the seasonal employees do. The other one that's worthy of note, too, is vehicle number 84, under Fleet Maintenance. Again, that was pointed out to you as being the float vehicle that we have that's used in case another vehicle is in maintenance. And it's also the one that periodically, for example, Suzanne went to a conference a week or so ago, and she and Chrissy used that vehicle to go to that conference. So it's a multipurpose, so we don't expect it to have high usage.
And those two vehicles did not. As you'll see, 15 and 20.
Understand.
Yeah, okay.
There, there's no, in my, there's no expectation that either of those would have high usage, except for the seasonals during the summer period. Mayor Protim, I'm kind of avoiding your question.
That's fine.
This is, this is very tough.
Well, ultimately, this was a tool to provide some advice to the council that, in turn, we would make a recommendation to the city manager and the staff. And as I stated before, I think we've reached the point of diminishing returns.
If I may jump in here, we really have, at this point, two and a half months, two and a half months of data. This is a really hot mic here. Two and a half months of data already that's impacted the staff. We, some of us in the committee are, are thinking that if we even just went to the end of June and terminated at that point, we would, we would have a good sampling of the vehicles like you're talking about. We're, we're not trying to reach conclusions on vehicles that are sitting in a garage. We understand exactly what you're saying about 84 and nine. I think, I think it might be useful to, I realize the resolution is written, disbands, you know, tonight, but I want to suggest to the council that possibly running it through the end of June and terminating would give us enough data to then go ahead and study, and the volunteers on the vehicle committee can run with the data and come back to council with more comprehensive analysis, because the snapshot for one month really is, it's scientifically problematic for reasons the city manager has explained and others have explained. I would suggest that if we had four full months of data, instead of running it all the way out to the end, it might be more useful to the council. I would ask the council to consider that. Thank you.
Bill?
Would the council consider terminating in one month? Add, add to that resolution? Just say, we'll, we'll let them have one more month of data, and then terminate the vehicle committee? Would that be a possibility?
We are halfway through the month of May, and we have been continuing to collect the data.
You still are, so...
Yeah.
We have a current resolution we have to vote on.
I know, we can amend it.
Yeah, that, it can certainly be modified.
Yeah, it can be amended.
One of the things I'd like to, to just advise the council on, as you, if we move forward in that way, that taking a snapshot of each individual vehicle provides a limited amount of information. The real information comes in comparing that, and that's what your staff does. We look at the different entities to see where these different vehicles are. The committee, as part of their bylaws, if you will, said that the staff would not be involved in the analysis. The committee would do that. It would be foolish for me not to do my own analysis, which is where a lot of the time has, has sunk. So, you know, I've done that, and that's just my own methodology. And what I've tried to do is follow each vehicle through every day to see where there might be chances. And we do this periodically anyway. That's what your staff does. And so if, if we continue with this, know that I'll be doing my own analysis as well, because I think that you don't, you don't completely grasp the different functions of the different divisions within the city. Where Parks Buildings and Grounds has vehicles here that are doing one thing, and Streets are doing other things, and certainly Field Services are doing other things. That's the part that's difficult for me, is to try to help you understand the complexities associated with this, and why I don't know that a pool works. It does for the police department. That, that, we've proven that, and you graciously removed that from the committee's work.
Mayor?
We, the reason we didn't want it, we, we've constantly tried to figure out ways to not impact city staff. And so that little bit about not making the city analyze things was not an intention And so that little bit about not making the city analyze things was not an intention to, you're an engineer. I, I'm not stupid. I know you're gonna be, put your engineer hat on. We really were struggling with every possible way to not impact the city and we've, we've run into some problems in the last couple of days, you know, trying to do that. And we're, we're clumsy about it, but we, that was really our intention.
Understand.
No?
Sorry, go ahead. So I see two major issues here with the data collecting. One is the GPS location of the vehicle at any given time. Having said that, with a motor pool, each vehicle is unique and it does, it has a, has a function in the city, like Dave has been telling us for the last three months. So you can't motor pool vehicles that have unique functions. Plus, if you tried to motor pool them, you would have to change everybody's schedule to match where that vehicle is gonna be at that time of the day. My, my thought was initially when this was proposed and we decided to give it a shot, I mentioned a vehicle tracking system. Maybe in the next few years, we can afford to put vehicle tracking in each vehicle. That data would immediately just show up on a computer. It would be all there. That's just a, a thought. So instead of manually doing this and, and hoping that each employee tracks their, their mileage and their time correctly, it would almost be better if we just hold off for the future when we have a little extra money and any new vehicles we get, they're gonna have, they have GPS built into them, I think, already. Some of the newer vehicles, don't they? The police cars do.
Don't know the answer to that.
They don't?
No.
We do that through our laptops. That's where GPS comes from. Okay, so it's tracked through there. But my point is, is collecting this data manually is just so tiresome and so involved that maybe five years from now, because five years is gonna be here pretty quickly, we can budget for tracking of the vehicles. And then all this data will just be there to, just a push of a button, bam, it's all there. Where the vehicle was, every moment of the day, how long it's been driving, when it's, how long it's been sitting. So this is a great step, Val, but I just think there's too much manual work to get there when we have technology to do it.
Thank you. Well, the risk of sounding repetitive from previous meetings, I guess the fundamental issue I have is a study of this enormity and degree and takes time. Should be generated out of, there's a problem to be solved. And as David has appropriately pointed out, the staff already does a lot of work in managing our vehicles for this city. I have not heard that there's some major problem that we've asked them to solve that they haven't solved, therefore we need a study like this to fix it. That's the problem. Why are we doing this? There's not a major reason to be doing it. If there's an easy way to do it in the future, we can track it easier, fine, but we're just, the term I used before, you know, we're making work in a, in a year that's tough for this city. We're trying to save money. It's tough. We don't need to be spending it on this, especially when there's no reason to be doing it. Nothing was generated that there was a problem that we had to do this study to solve. And if there is a problem, the first thing we should be doing is ask staff to, to look into it and come back to us with a solution. That was never done. We should not be doing this. Go ahead, Bill.
One of the concerns that was brought to me by Val in several of the emails was take-home vehicles. Do you want to go ahead and elaborate on that, Dave, on take-home vehicles and what take-home vehicles we have and, and usage there, if you don't mind?
No, I don't, don't mind at all. I'll try to do it from memory. I have, I have a full-use vehicle that's part of my contract as the city manager.
Right.
The police chief also has a take-home vehicle, as you might imagine. The utilities director does as well, mostly for emergency responses. The planning director has a take-home vehicle that's included in her compensation package. If it were to go away, then I would feel obligated to increase hers out. That was something that was negotiated a long time ago. And that's why she has that, that vehicle. Okay, now I need to kind of look around the room. There is a Public Works city engineer vehicle. It's sitting idle right now because that position is empty. If I start with the different divisions, our Fleet Maintenance Crew Chief has a take-home vehicle because he is responsible for responding to not only roadside assistance, but also he backs up many of our snowplow operators. Our Field Services Crew Chief has a take-home vehicle. A great example was on the very early morning hours of Mother's Day. He responded to a water break on West Road out by Teller County Way. Water was flowing at, well, we lost three hundred thousand gallons of water in ninety minutes. That's about thirty-six hundred gallons per minute and he was able to respond within about ten minutes. And so with the appropriate tools, and so rather than have to drive to the shop and get all the vehicles, he was able to save us a lot of money because of, of, of water loss. The Streets Crew Chief and the Parks Buildings and Grounds Crew Chief have take-home vehicles as well because again, they respond to emergencies twenty-four seven. And, oh, and from the police department, our two commanders. And again, because they respond, our victim's advocate who covers the entire county of Teller responds to I, call-outs twenty-four seven. And then our two detectives because many times they respond to not only incidents here at Lutland Park, but they may have to respond to interviewing people at Memorial Hospital or Penrose Hospital, those, those types of things. So rather than have them come in to get a vehicle to do that, they're allowed to take those home. I think the only other one we have is an on-call vehicle that we sent home with someone who then, if there's an emergency or if there's ice, they come in and triage and then call in the appropriate people. If, I don't believe I've left any out. I'm looking around the table.
Where, what in wastewater?
That, for, for the Divide Water Plant? That's right. Because the, one of the operators from the wastewater treatment plant, I'm sorry, via contract with Teller County, we run the wastewater treatment plant in Divide. That operator lives in Divide. So rather than drive in in his POV, get a city vehicle driving back out there and then come in and do that shuffle back and forth, that's part of his route in. So he drives the city vehicle home, he stops at the plant on the way in and does that work there, saving a couple of hours every single day.
At any time, ha- have you felt that the take-home vehicles have been abused?
No.
Okay. I'm done with my.
John? Well, I, I've sat here patiently now and listened to Ken's sermon several times. So I'm gonna give you my sermon again. The reason we were doing this and the council voted to establish this committee was that we were unhappy with the size of the operating reserve for this year and we were looking for ways to save money.
Is that the end of your sermon?
Uh, for the moment.
Okay, then I'll give you mine.
All right.
I would agree. Nobody wants to save money more than I do. I don't believe it's the council's job to do that. The council's job for me is to instruct the city manager to do what we've been doing. Collect some data, show us, we think that we can save some money relative to vehicles. Can you work on this this year and relative to our two thousand eighteen budget? Come back to us and show us how we can save some money. I don't think it's our job to manage the vehicles in our, in our community. I just don't. Show me, show me another community where the city council is managing the fleet. It's just not our job. That's my opinion. You know, take that with a grain of salt, but that's my opinion. I just don't think that's what we should do. If we all think that we're spending too much money on vehicles, we have extra vehicles, I get that. And I'm not disagreeing with that or agreeing with it. My approach is tell the city manager who does this, who has more experience and more knowledge than all of us put together relative to our vehicles, hey, I think we can save a little bit of money. Can you look into this for us this year? Now, if we don't get what we want, then we got another question. I don't get us doing that, John. I'm sorry. That's just my opinion.
Yeah, no, you don't have to apologize.
One little thing, no, recognizing there's, you know, we go look at progressive insurance things, right? The only problem with those is they don't really show what's happening with the vehicle. They just want, they show trips and data and time. The, the, the police department has a solution for that. They have laptops so that they can describe their trips and things like that.
Are you talking the plug-in thing?
Well, or any kind of digital thing, unless somebody's gonna speak into a microphone or something.
I don't know about the rest of my colleagues. I'm ready for the question.
Okay, that sounds great.
I wanna X one, Dave.
Okay, and then we have public comment and then we'll, we'll call for questions. Go ahead, Paul.
Did I hear you? You just X it for one more month and you automatically dissolve this vehicle committee?
I, I, I would, I would suggest that we've got two and a half months' worth of data now, a little over. That, that to get a good sample and stop at the end of June would give us a better sample to do a proper analysis without having to go to the end of the original resolution. So I would, I would suggest that, and this is up to the council, of course, if, if we went to the end of June, it might be useful.
And, and I would argue that if we do go to the end of June, I'll, I'll buy into that. Then let's give that information to our city manager and let him deal with it.
I believe there have been some questions raised and answered, intelligent questions, and I appreciate, you know, vehicle uses when they use temporary emergency and all of that. I would not have known those answers and those questions would have not been asked if not for this committee. I appreciate all the hard work being put into it by the members of the committee. I do not want to see the city burdened any more than necessary, but I believe it's worked, given them today at June and it automatically dissolves and then that information is assimilated and then it can all be put together. So that's why I Xed that. So I'm sorry.
Don't beat you. Tanner, would you like to weigh in on this? You have signed up. And anybody else that can, Darwin, you're certainly on that board if you'd like to weigh in.
Thank you, Mayor. Tanner Coy, two forty East Highway twenty-four. This is a very difficult conversation to listen to. As you know, I support the VERC. I think it's a good idea. I tend to be an optimist and I see the bright side as much as possible and, and for a number of reasons, I think it's a healthy exercise. It's an honest, good faith effort by citizens to better understand a component of our city. Good thing. It's an act of providing oversight, transparency and accountability to the citizens. Good things. It's not increasing city expense, but it might reduce them. So the risk-reward ratio is very acceptable. There's something to gain and very little to lose. Good thing. I've been listening carefully to this whole dialogue and in all the previous meetings, when I wasn't here April twentieth, I watched the, the videos. And when I'm not here, May fourth, I watch the video. In some places, I watch several times to, to really understand the concerns and what's happening here. I think I understand and they can be summarized pretty easily. The criticism that the VERC doesn't provide baseline metrics at this point to compare data to, I don't agree with. I think that that's asking essentially for preconceived notions of a committee as to what should be the outcome of the analysis of the utilization of the fleet. I think that if you want some baseline metrics to apply to the use of the fleet, you need to ask the staff that have been managing the fleet for years, who have been telling us how efficiently utilized it is. I love hearing that the vehicle fleet is efficiently utilized. And if I were sitting in your seat, I would say, that's wonderful. Can you share any supporting data so that we can say to the people that their vehicles are being used efficiently? Here's the information we have to support it. Regarding the expense, I think it's been mischaracterized and overstated. Staff are on salary or wages. They have shifts that they work and I would be shocked if anybody has worked more than a few extra minutes past their shift because of the work required by the VERC. Payroll expense isn't going up. Overtime isn't being incurred. That book, Mayor, you held up on, or pointed to on April twentieth, did not cost the people thousands of dollars. I think that's a mischaracterization. Time is money. I'll give you that. And the time that went into it does have cost. But really what's being quantified here is the opportunity cost that's lost with the work to the VERC. So i.e., staff could be doing other things with that time than filling out a log. What could they be doing with that time that is so much more valuable to the citizenry that it is thousands of dollars' worth of expense? I don't see it. I really don't. And, and I, and I'm gonna get back to that here in, in a moment. Mr. Matthews, you've said repeatedly, and you've been very adamant, and I understand the, the statements about not seeing the problem and not seeing the reason why we need this. What's the trigger to cause this degree of, of effort? Well, I would tell you I do see the problem and I think it's very clear and some of us are paying a price for it. Cost overruns on projects have left our general fund reserves virtually gone. As a result, city is no longer functioning as it used to. This is evident. It is a problem. And the VERC is one small way of looking for solutions. Now I'd be happy to discuss with any of you at any time what those problems are to any degree of detail. Now's not the time for the list, but I'll leave you with one example. City used to pressure wash its assets downtown. Its sidewalks, its lampposts, its benches, its trashcans, its planters, the curbs, the gutters, the signs. As you know, our downtown is filthy. Highway twenty-four is a big part of that problem. It's not like other towns. We have a real challenge here. And our community's ability to attain its economic goals are impacted in part by the city's ability to maintain its assets downtown, to provide a safe, clean and attractive central business district. A few years ago, city decided to stop the practice of cleaning downtown, pressure washing, in part because private enterprise stepped up and said, hey, we'll do it. We're going to wash the storefronts and the sidewalks. We'll get all the city property while we're at it. And can Public Works please focus on some other beautification efforts with the resources we, the people, have freed up? And they said yes, and it was a great public-private partnership. Well, then, the city decided that it would uphold certain regulations that make it cost prohibitive for us to pressure wash. So not only does the city not pressure wash any longer, but it has upheld regulations that make it prohibitive for the rest of us. And last year, the city paid for its share of the now more expensive process. But this year, it will not do so. Not unless the council, you, decide that you can afford five thousand dollars out of your emergency reserve fund. This is not an emergency unless you happen to be invested downtown and dollars are on the line. You could call it that. But that's what it's come to. Please walk downtown and take a look at the buildings and take a look at the sidewalks and take a look at the lampposts and the planters and the benches and the signage. And please know that I've been told I can't so much as hose it down. Can't. And the city won't, well, again, unless it's an emergency, well, pay its share. That's a problem. So we'll leave off on that one. As far as the overarching problem here, the, I'm sorry, the overarching issue here, and that is the staff's perception that we, the council, don't trust them. That's more important than anything. I disagree. There are more important things than feelings of trust. I would say that that overarching issue is a symptom of I would say that that overarching issue is a symptom of a broader underlying issue, and that is an imbalance in the relationship between employer and staff. This isn't about trust, it's about transparency and accountability. When I was last audited by the IRS, the mileage deduction that I claimed on my taxes was one of the first things that the examiner chose to examine. Not only did he wanna see the bill of sale for the one vehicle in my fleet, and the title, insurance, registration, and, um, physical inspection of the vehicle, the examiner wanted a trip log showing every single trip that that vehicle went on during the audited year, every trip. The date, time, origin, and destination addresses, the driver of the vehicle, the purpose of the trip, accounting for every single mile that I deducted. And for any mile that I could not support through the right documentation, I was not allowed to claim and had to pay the government tax revenue on those corresponding expenses. The auditor went so far as to select, what I thought at the time were random trips from my log and asked for additional information. Come to find out, they were customer addresses. He took that information and then went to my point-of-sale database and requested purchase history reports for each of the customers to make sure that there were corresponding purchases in their, in their records supporting the use of the vehicle to their addresses. Sounds ridiculous, I know. It's a good thing I had all of the information, because my accountant had told me, "If you're going to claim your vehicle in this way, you need to make sure that you have the supporting data." I did not call it an onerous task and it was not make-work or expensive or unnecessary. It is just the way it is, it's the level of accountability that the government holds the taxpayers to. And in my opinion, for the taxpayers to hold the government to a similar level of accountability is perfectly acceptable. It's not a trust issue, it's just the way it is. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you. No, we're good.
Yeah, you can't, uh, you can't use a hose outside your building. I mean, seriously, you can't wash it down.
You know, I was told if I was seen washing my building with anything other than rain, I'd be reported.
Ain't that a darn crazy shit?
There are compliant methods of washing buildings that would allow me to use a hose, but it's, um,
You gotta collect the water?
It's not efficient.
You gotta collect the water?
I have to wait for it to rain.
There are EPA regulations that prevent us from washing buildings and letting go to the storm drain. That's been explained to many people, including Mr. Coy numerous times. We did this last year as a joint effort where we hired someone to do this. It's the truth about issues associated with stormwater and water runoff into public drainage and waterways systems. It's not my rule, it's a rule that the EPA started about three or four years ago.
I know, the EPA is overreached, but, and I understand what you're saying, but I don't agree with it.
Well, I don't agree with it either, but you charge me with following the laws of the country and the state and our charter. That's my role and responsibility. The council has the flexibility to, as I mentioned to Mr. Coy earlier today, if you want to hire that company to do it, you certainly can, you've got the flexibility with your budget. But as he so astutely pointed out, it's a tight budget. The council raised the reserve to a quarter of a million dollars, and if you, my recommendation, if you wanna use some of that to partner with the businesses, we can do that. But everything else is, is very tight.
I suggest we look at it in a different way, being as we have Highway twenty-four coming through and see that being a major contributor to dust and waste and dirt, that they should have some responsibility and obligation to help and clean up this city.
One would think that they would, but they don't accept that responsibility.
Well, I believe a line of communication should be open in the intergovernmental meetings to discuss this.
Thanks, Paul. Unless you have something on VERC, then I'm gonna call the question.
Well, I was going to say, um, I think we strayed from the VERC here with this. This will come back to you under items not on the agenda, because I am going to ask for that, but it's not about the water quality stuff. It's about the city saying, "We don't have the money and can't do it unless it comes from the emergency reserve, sell the car." What's the benefit of that truck that's been sitting behind City Hall, unused for days on end, and we can't clean Main Street for the twenty thousand vehicles a day that drive through that Main Street and look at our town?
We've made an investment in that vehicle that's sitting behind City Hall, it is being used periodically, and when there's a Public Works Director, it will be used. So we've made that investment, that money is spent, if we sell it, we don't, we get dimes on the dollar. Council should remember that we have removed from the fleet two vehicles since this process started. Two vehicles, so we've already done some heavy lifting to make things more efficient.
Thank you.
I have one question for Tanner, Tanner, have you attended the VERC meetings?
No.
Thank you.
I'd like to, uh, throw a motion out there to, uh, to the council to consider modifying the termination date, uh, to June thirtieth. That's my motion, is just to slightly modify this resolution.
Help me out, Aaron.
Is there a second on the?
We need a second on the amendment, second. Any questions?
And so, if I could ask a clarifying question, is the motion then to accept the resolution with the modification to end on June thirtieth, is that what you're proposing?
Yeah, and change the language appropriately.
And so that's, you're voting on, if you make that move, are they voting on the resolution, counselor?
They're voting on that as an amendment.
So they make the amendment, then they vote on the resolution, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're gonna vote on the amendment first, which is to extend the date to June thirtieth, is that correct, Bill?
Right.
And, and Mayor, just so it's clear for, for council, the way the amendment would change, eight-one-six, if you have it in front of you. If you look at section one, that would be rewritten so that at the end of that sentence, you would insert "Effective June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen." So section one would read, "Resolution number eight thirteen is hereby rescinded, and the Vehicle Usage Review Committee is hereby dissolved, disbanded, and terminated effective June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen." Section seven would be amended so that it would read...
Two?
Section two would be amended so that it would read, "Effective as of June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, the Vehicle Usage Review Committee shall cease to exist. As of June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen, there shall be no further work performed by it or by any city personnel related to the committee for the purposes for which it was created."
Uh, yeah, question. If, if we were to agree on the end of June, then it seems to me the council would wanna report, and so we ought to be able to work after June thirtieth, maybe a month to put a report together which summarizes our findings and recommendations.
That would be expected.
Right, that's how I look at it.
Collection of the data would end June thirtieth?
Right, all the cities work with that.
And should we give VERC another thirty days, would that be fair?
Yes, I see it would be.
So we've added a new section to this, which would be a new section one, which would say that the collection of data will end June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen. And then section, what had been section one will be changed to section two, and rather than, um, the, um, the insertion at the end, rather than saying "Effective June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen", it will say "Terminated effective July thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen." And then section two, which had been section two, will now be section three, and just as I read it before, except we're supposed to see July thirtieth or June thirtieth?
July thirty-first?
July thirty-first.
Everybody understand the question?
Just for the amendment right now, right?
Correct.
Right. So, just, we have a motion in the second, or we do not?
So the motion maker needs to, uh, agree to the friendly amendment to add John's point.
As amended, uh, for, and verbalized by the city attorney.
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you, Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
No.
Levy?
No.
Matthews?
No.
Swinier?
Yes.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Call the question. On the amended motion. Correct. On the amended resolution. Correct.
Call for the motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you, Suzanne.
Schaefer?
Are we voting on the resolution as written?
As amended.
As amended?
As amended.
Yes.
Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
No.
Swinier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Motion carries six-one.
Thank you. Okay, Suzanne? We'll have to go to executive session for eight-seventeen, so we move on to item ten?
Yes.
Thank you.
The, the executive session.
Exactly. Exactly, that's, yeah, that's what I thought I said, okay. Good, we'll move on to item number ten, public comment on items?
No, no, we have... Mayor, we need to do nine B, it is, there is a resolution before the council.
That was my question, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir, but we do not have to go to executive session unless the council needs to do that. So let's let Suzanne start with that.
Let's do that.
Thank you, Mayor Levy, before you, you have resolution number eight-seventeen, which is a resolution extending the policy regarding reimbursing certain expenses resulting from water main breaks and sewer backups affecting residences to a certain non-residential situation. And I'd like to just bring to council's attend, attention, this was originally on the consent calendar, and so you have all of your information, if you're following along, it's under the consent calendar, we've just moved this item now to new business.
Questions, council? Does anyone know what we're going to hold with this? There's no questions? Call for motion.
Need to approve resolution number eight-seventeen.
You have a second? I second. Suzanne?
Thank you. Carr?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Levy?
Yes.
Matthews?
Yes.
Swinier?
Yes.
Sawyer?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Suzanne. Okay, I have one person signed up for public comment, and it's Tanner, you wanna come back and continue the conversation?
Tanner Coy, two forty East Highway twenty-four. As you know, downtown is rather dirty, it's that time of year again. It's desperately in need of cleaning. Not gonna rehash it all, five thousand dollars is half the cost of cleaning storefronts, sidewalks, curb gutter, lamp posts, trashcans, benches, and signage uh, from West Street to Laurel.
Is based with the other half?
Well, in the past, it's been business owners. Since, uh, well, as of last year, when we first engaged this company and the cost of this cleaning went up five hundred percent, the DDA sponsored the other half. This year, the DDA's budget is very, very tight, as it is engaged in litigation. We have, this July will mark one year since we've incurred any payroll cost, and we have a seventy, well, sixty-five thousand dollar payment to the city coming up in June. Lot of good happening, but some of what's going on is making it a real challenge for the DDA. If it's a ten thousand dollar bill to get this done, I really don't think it's gonna happen. And if we don't lead the downtown property owners to a viable solution, then either one, downtown won't be cleaned, or two, properties that are cleaned won't likely use compliant methods, putting business and property owners at unnecessary risk. How much money does the Chamber of Commerce spend promoting tourism in this area to the benefit of the city? About other city departments and other community efforts to bring people, to invite people to our beautiful town? Cleaning it's very important, putting our best foot forward is important. Curb appeal has real value, and to attain our economic goals as a community, we need to address those things. Regulation has made it prohibitively expensive, and we need your help. Will you consider, as you did last year, a five thousand dollar contribution to a ten thousand dollar expense to clean downtown?
What was that word you used that started with a P?
Prohibited?
Oh, no.
Pressure wash?
Tanner, what was the budget line for, uh, pressure cleaning in the DDA's budget this year?
Well, there's not one specifically for pressure washing, we have a beautification account, and there's a ten thousand dollar budget for it. Because of cost overruns in other categories, such as contract, professional services, and legal fees, uh, we are, we're holding on to all the pennies to the weekend. We may not be able to, um, to expend those ten thousand dollars on beautification, which was planned. I originally put them in that budget last year because I had a feeling this would be the case with the city. Cost overruns are evident, and the state of the budget was apparent, and I thought I could put that ten thousand dollars away in the event that the city was unable to maintain its own assets downtown. That is now the case, and the DDA may not be able to compensate.
Mayor, so just a, a thought, 'cause all the chocolate that I ate over there at the planning is kicking in, 'cause you guys took so long, you have a big jar of chocolate and I was eating it, so. Anyways, so maybe we should expand our, our, uh, resources with asking to help the downtown stores. Maybe we could divide this money up, I'm looking at six entities here that could donate money to make the ten thousand. I'm looking at Chamber, DDA, Main Street, City, Owners, Visitor Center. If they all just gave one thousand six hundred dollars, you have your ten thousand dollars. That's a possibility there. Make it easier than five thousand and five thousand.
It sounds harder than easier to me. Deb Miller's here, would you like to ask her she did that invest?
We have the city here, we have kind of a representative of the DDA, but, but one thousand six hundred is, is nothing if we s, if we just get that much. It makes it a lot easier, I, I don't know, it's just a thought, uh, we could combine all our resources here and, and not, not have such a big chunk of change out of just two pockets.
Keep in mind, the city used to do this more than once per year. Our level of cleanliness downtown has...
And, and I'm sure it's gonna start up in the next, maybe next year or the year after that, just, you know, one year is not gonna break everybody.
Well, tell that to the many people who have many dollars invested and need to appeal to a customer base of pedestrians and visitors to town to generate not only their incomes, but the revenues needed to support payrolls and taxes.
No, I'm not arguing that, Tanner, it's just, we can, you know, it's just one year.
Couple of arguments for you, Tanner. One, no one's cleaning my building. I'm not in the middle of downtown. Clean your own building. Two, you owe us a million dollars, get it paid, don't ask for five thousand more. And three, the lawsuit that you're in is costing you a fortune. And three, the lawsuit that you're in is costing you a fortune. I would recommend, 'cause I know at least half your board or close to half your board thinks you, thinks you're in a lawsuit that you shouldn't be in.
Mayor, that might be a little inappropriate right now. Please.
Okay. My opinion.
I, I realize that, but he's not representing the DDA right now.
Understand. Money's tied all over though. I know DDA's tied on money. You're the one that first referred to how tight the city is. And just again, the first thing I think of is no one's cleaning my building for me.
I'm not asking you to clean my building.
No, I'm asking you-
I'm asking the city to maintain its own assets, its sidewalks, its curbs, gutters, lamp posts, public signage, public asset.
We do what we can within the limits that we have. We have purchased a sweeper for that, the sidewalks. We do can clean the lamp post with a bucket of water. We've done that in the past. So we will have some effort for cleaning the downtown, but unless there's money to do the power washing and that proper approach that keeps us out of trouble, then that's the way we'll have to do it.
Well, so there you go. The city will help in any way they can.
Does that way include five thousand dollars for pressure washing?
I haven't heard that, but council will make that decision at some time. I don't know if we'll do it today or not, but.
We have no action to take then, it's just a suggestion.
Right, it's just public comment today, and we can take action.
Well, I'd appreciate it if you would consider it for future agendas, as, uh, June is the ideal time to execute this. Thank you.
Okay, I've, no one else signed up on the public comment? Ms. Miller, do you have anything to add? You're not signed up, but she's running up here.
Very quickly. We rece- we, um, received word today. I don't know if many of you know anything about the television show American Pickers. Yes. I don't think my husband would watch TV if that show was not on, but we did receive word from the American Pickers today that they will be in Colorado in July. Now, they are looking for locations. Um, we sent an email out today, and we have information within the Chamber office of their email, their, um, telephone number of contact. They're looking for unique locations that they can go and pick, um, things that, uh, antiques, things that they are interested in looking at. So, we've put that out, we, the press is picking it up as well, um, but we will continue to promote anyone in this area that has a unique product or a unique antique, something that they would like to see the Pickers come and, and do that. We did have them here in twenty twelve. They were in Colorado. Dave Centane, who was the Chamber president, was traveling. At that time, they were stuck on one of the Colorado highways up in the mountain. He happened to stop, helped to pull them out. Um, so we did get play from Colorado Springs at that point in time, but just wanted to let you know that, that they will be coming to Colorado in July.
That's exciting. Thanks, Deb. Anybody else? No? Okay, we will move on to Mayor's report. We'll start with that banner on the wall, Woodland Park is Broncos Country. We had a wonderful event. Jane Manning, I don't know who all was involved, the city, the schools, the chamber, everybody that I can think of was around that table, and, um, hats off to the Broncos for wanting to use Woodland Park as a great place for their event. Hopefully, we, we, um, did a great job. I know we did a great job. Hopefully, we satisfied the Broncos and that we can sustain this event and have it here in the future, but to the eight or nine hundred runners and all those that participated, you know, thank you, thank you, thank you. It was a wonderful day, and, and like I said, when I was there that day, I was only responsible for the best day of the year weather-wise, but, uh, great event, and so thanks to everybody that participated, and, uh, especially the leadership. I, I just, it couldn't have been better, Jane. Good job. Yeah, everybody. It was, it was, it was a great partnership, it really was. Uh, Saturday, May twentieth, twenty seventeen, Mountain Top Cycling Club, their Rite of Silence, annual event. Registration begins at six thirty PM at the U-Pass Cultural Center. I think they have hot dogs afterwards. Saturday, May twenty-seventh, uh, ten o'clock volunteers are welcome to join in placing flags of veterans' headstones in the Woodland Park Cemetery. That's Memorial Day weekend, obviously. Monday, May twenty-ninth, seven o'clock AM, the Memorial Day Flag Raising in Lyons Park. If it's anything like last year, everybody needs to attend. It is hard-hitting, it is a special event, and for all our service people, I would recommend support from everybody that's listening, everybody here today. Last year, I just thought was one of the great events of the year, and I looked around, and what do you think, David, a hundred people maybe? It's got to be a lot better. So anyone that has the wherewithal to communicate that, um, the twenty-ninth, um, seven o'clock, I know that's a tough time for some people, but Memorial Day at seven o'clock in Lyons Park, um, and it's a great event. It would be great if the whole council could be there. It just doesn't get any better. Also, that day at eleven o'clock, Memorial Day Ceremony in the Woodland Park Cemetery. Then Thursday, June first, from ten to noon, the Chamber Luncheon Learn Your Business Thriving Toolkit at the U-Pass Cultural Center and RSVP to Deb, six eight seven nine eight eight five. A week from tomorrow is our high school's graduation. I believe seven o'clock at the Pike's Peak Center. It's always a great event. There's about a hundred and eighty students that will graduate and, and, um, be grateful to people to support that also. I think that's all I have. We'll move on to council reports, and Carol?
Along with, uh, thanks to all who were involved in the seven K run, I wanted to point out that the young woman who was carrying the full-size American flag is the executive assistant from my office. She's a retired baby chief. She came to this country as a seven-year-old, speaking absolutely no English, um, from the Philippines, and she's just an incredible young woman, and she has strong arms, in addition to strong legs. I have some posters to pass out. These are the Lock Homes of Woodland Park. This is a, an effort from the Historical Preservation Committee. I think this is certainly frameable. May is, uh, or May is Historical Preservation Month, is that correct? Or is it, yeah, it is May. The committee, uh, has, over the years, come up with a couple of different, uh, a couple of different posters. A few years ago, they did one with the Chimneys of Woodland Park. Did one with the Chimneys of Woodland Park. It was really a nice, uh, nice, uh, version, but David Langley of Langley Architects put a lot of money into this, and the committee, uh, provides some of this as well, and these will be available where?
In my office.
Okay. There's, uh, what, we printed up about five hundred of these?
No.
Less.
Yes, we have fifty of them, but we can print more.
But, uh, it, it's one of the, um, foundations of not only the Main Street effort, but, uh, the Historical Preservation Can- Committee, and that is to promote those things that are unique to Woodland Park. And we don't have a lot of brick and mortar buildings like you're going to see in Cripple Creek or Victor, but the cabins of Woodland Park are very unique to, to our, our city, and I think David did a great job with this product, and, uh, hope you take a look at it. Thanks. David Langley.
Val?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you got the Big Bane Street, uh, presentation with the vision. That's principally what they've been doing. We're trying to trim the number of meetings. Some are reluctant to do that. We're trying to focus our energies on real action items instead of... Well, I'll just leave it at that. And, uh, Parks and Rec, Cindy does a great job reporting on that. We're, we're working on a few little projects. None of these things are coming to council yet, which is, uh, what I think I should apprise you of, is something like that's coming up. One last thing. Our, uh, coach and mayor, Neil Levy, has, uh, decided to move on from coaching the high school baseball team, and I think it's a real loss. I know it, it's going to open up his calendar, but he did a fantastic job, and, uh, I'm always appreciative of, of those who help, uh, including our, uh, Councilman Sawyer, who help our youth, uh, constantly as, as leaders, scout leaders, whatever, uh, and, and I want everybody to give him a hand for all his work he's done.
Thank you. Ken?
Uh, just echo what Pat Hislop said, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, on the cleanup for this Saturday has been changed to June seventeenth, Saturday, and everything else remains the same as far as I know, but just, uh, trying to get the word out quickly. Because of the weather, things would be kind of a mess on Saturday, we're afraid. So June seventeenth is the new day for the citywide cleanup. And keep in mind, that also includes the Friends of the Forest are working with us, and they're meeting at the, uh, Empac Church, I believe, is their point of, uh, organization. That's all.
Paul?
I don't know what to say. Kinda getting tired of the bickering here. I wish we could do like we did the last meeting, very easy, simple, and, uh, we were all together, thirty minutes in and out. I know it's not possible to do that every time. It's like a pecking place. I wish that, and I would like to extend it once again. Let's all just try to work together and make this work. And I'd like to make one suggestion, and it's a serious suggestion. Our downtown is very important to all of us. It should be maintained, our assets should be cleaned, and C-Dot is a contributor. Because of this highway coming through this town, I would ask that we, please, open up communications with them and see if they can help us as they should in contributing to the, uh, welfare of this city, Woodland Park, and, and the condition in which it looks. They have an obligation to us, and, uh, we have an obligation to them. We're fulfilling our obligation, 'cause we have no choice. That highway runs through our city. They have an obligation to us to help us keep this city safe and clean. And please, I'm asking you, open up communications with them and see if they can help us in any way to help clean this up, and I'm asking you.
I understand.
Manager, talk with the commissioners. Normstein sits on that, uh, board, and I'm sure he would help. I can't talk for the person, but I'm sure that Tele County, the intergovernment, us working together as a group, as an organized group, as one, can, can, can see our way through these things and not bicker with each other on, on certain aspects. I, I, it, it just hurts me to see this happen in this meeting in public, but let it be. Let it be out in the air. I always say we should air our laundry out on top of the table, and so we do, and I just wish we could get along a lot better. And thanks, everybody, for coming, participating. It's been a late night, and, uh, we're, we're working our way through it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Noel?
I don't know how to follow that.
Yeah, okay. It's a plea from the heart.
I'll just say, thank you, everybody, for being here, and, uh, it's nice to have citizens that come up here and look at us from the outside and give us, give us information that we generally don't have, so, thank you.
John?
I'm happy with the outcome of our discussion on resolution eight sixteen. I think it's now our responsibility by other committee members to, uh, do a super job on collecting and analyzing the data, and we'll come to the council in July to, to spread recommendations. I'm not prejudging the outcome, but we've got some work to do, yeah. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we will move on, and the city attorney?
Okay.
Mr. Butteray?
We do have quite a few things, Mayor, this evening. First, from special projects. It won't take long, but we do have quite a few things.
Mayor, council. Um, I had hoped to have a bunch of good news tonight, but, um, I got a call at about three o'clock this afternoon, and the governor's visit that was scheduled for Monday has been postponed. They're supposed to call and try and reschedule something for June. We'll see. She promised me. I, you guys will be the first to know. Um, we'd also been told that the HAWK system would be turned on on Monday, and I just got an email tonight, as we were sitting here, that said they had an issue with a electrical inspection, so it will probably be later next week. They're still hoping before Memorial Day. So, anyway, but the HAWK system is going to happen. If anybody wants brochures, I used to have brochures on that and how that will work. We are, we will start seeing our summer advertising on KOAA and KRCC. Um, our, our postcard mailer will be going out to Colorado Springs addresses. If anybody wants to see exactly the events that we're advertising, I have that list here. Um, the final thing is the Memorial Park grand opening. Just another reminder, June fourteenth. That is in the evening, starts at five thirty with the flag raising at six. Uh, the American Legion will be doing the flag raising for us, um, and a barbecue to follow, so hopefully, everybody will come and help us celebrate Memorial Park. That's all I have.
Thanks, Jane. Thank you.
A quick wastewater expansion update. Uh, the west basins are complete. They're, uh, finishing the sloping of the floors. Uh, they'll be doing the water tests on those, uh, next week. Luckily, yesterday, we had a big pour, got in before the snow, and everything was covered today. They still worked, uh, about five hours today, uh, so they still don't even have a full day of delay, um, even through this weather, so that's going well. Uh, they have finished the stormwater improvements, and, uh, they've moved inside now, and they're running some electrical, uh, conduits for the controls and the skater inside.
And is that project within budget so far?
Uh, it, we have a couple of change orders, like I had, I told you guys, um, about those improvements, uh, but yes.
Thank you.
Understand you're way ahead of schedule on some of that.
They are, I just, I don't, I don't like to jinx it.
Um, speaking of Memorial Park, they got the last of the sod in right before this, uh, snowstorm hit, so it's getting anchored in very nicely. Believe it or not, they put the fountains in today and tested the fountains. Uh, it's going to be beautiful. Uh, a lot of the concrete that didn't meet our specification has been removed and replaced, as well as some of the vegetation, and very quietly, they have put the fish in the pond, and the fish seem to be doing just fine, and that project is on budget. Uh, there have not been cost overruns associated with it. The aquatic center, the roof is in, it's completely, uh, sealed. Uh, they're in the process of digging the leisure pool right now and forming up some of the concrete associated with it. The interior framing is being done, and it's being done by a local company, Shomer Construction. They're out of Colorado Springs, but the owner lives here in Woodland Park, and he has local people working on those crews. Uh, the rock on the fireplace is done. It's the Manitou Pink Stone, and again, it was done by a local contractor. Uh, we're still, uh, working on the slide. I think we're going to get there just fine, and that project, too, has not had a cost overrun. It is on budget and on schedule, and that's all we have tonight, Mayor. Mike Farina is going to give us a quarterly finance report, so we're not done yet. Um, I had these daggers, 'cause he's been working hard on this, and I could feel it, plus Suzanne was saying, "Mike, Mike." So it's, we're very excited to present this to you, Mike.
I thought I was off the hook there.
No, 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 just, sorry.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, um, we're happy to be able to present the first quarter financial report for two thousand and seventeen. Uh, this report is, was just passed out to you, and it contains a couple of sections. The, I, I didn't want to jump right into an analysis of the first quarter without first discussing the annual budget and the parts of the annual budget. So the first section of the quarterly financial report contains a two thousand and seventeen annual budget- So the first section of the quarterly financial report contains a 2017 annual budget recap, and then the next part of this report contains the financial analysis for the first quarter. Just, and I'm just gonna highlight in this presentation parts of the report. You've got the report in front of you, which has, which will have a little more detail. But just to do the recap on the budget, the total budget for 2017 that was adopted was 30... If somebody asks, "What's our budget?", this is the number I would give them, 32.1 million. It's not the total budget. If you look at each individual page of the budget, because the individual page includes transfers from one fund to another, but those, that would, if you included that in this number, it would be a doubling up of amounts. So I, whenever you present the budget as a whole, you eliminate the inter-fund transfers. So our total budget was 32.1 million. Well, let me go back to that. You can see also from this, our total budget is made up of primarily general fund operations, sub-17 million. We also have a Streets Capital Improvement Fund. Sometimes that's 709,000, sometimes it's quite a bit larger, just depends on what we're doing in form of streets and drainage improvements. And then you have our two enterprise funds, Water Utility and Wastewater Utility. Water Utility is 2.7. The Wastewater Utility Fund is 9.6 because of the major capital project within that fund. So again, it just varies depending on what we're doing in terms of capital projects. You also have the Grants Fund listed, Debt Service Fund or Funds, and the Downtown Development Authority Fund. On the next, on the next slide here is the General Fund, as our major fund. I'm showing that first. And this, this part of the report shows where does the money go, the uses. So this describes the budget, 2017 budget, in terms of public safety, the services that we provide, public safety, public works, culture and recreation, and then the legislative, administrative, and support. Also new to the budget this year, we started out with half of it last year, but this year is a full year of payments to the school district for the 1.09% sales tax that was approved by the voters in 2016. So, and then the, also in this budget for 2017 in the General Fund is the capital project for the Aquatic Center. So our total budget for the General Fund is 18.5 million. The graph, I, in the report and on the slide here, I eliminated the capital projects because I just wanted to show, you know, operationally, what the makeup is of our General Fund budget. So you see it says excludes capital project, and that's why, just to kinda show operationally where it kinda falls year to year for operations. Where's the money come from? The sources that fund these services that we provide? The majority is in taxes, as you can see on this slide, and then there are other revenues that also support the General Fund. Then our other funds, Streets Capital Improvement Fund, sources, primary source of Streets Capital Improvement Fund is the city's 1% sales tax, uses is street drainage improvements. Water and wastewater utility funds, sources are primarily user charges, and the uses are the utility operations, improvements, and administration. So now into the second part of the report, which is the financial analysis. The financial analysis consists of a comparison of year-to-date actuals, in this case, the first quarter, to budget and also to the prior year at the same point in time. So the first part of it is the expenditure, on the expenditures. You can see the analysis laid out by the individual departments from the budget and the services that we provide. Just a couple of highlights on this page. Legislative, and I gotta refer to my notes. For example, the report, also with the graphs in the report, are descriptions of some of these amounts that kinda might jump out at you as users or lookers or readers of the report. For example, legislative, the first one, you see a decrease of $11,747, or that's a 17% change. What is that? That's savings in legal services. We've had savings in legal fees, and also the reduction when the budget was adopted of the community investment funding. That's what's contributed to the reduction in legislative. Now, sometimes it's just, sometimes these differences are timing issues. For example, if you look at planning, the dollar change from the prior year was 7,600 and, or a 12% change or increase over last year, and that's a timing issue. Payroll in March had three payrolls, the last payday was as of March 31st. Last year, that payday was in, was April 1st. So sometimes those differences because of timing. Another big one on this screen here is the school district sales tax. You can see the payments. There were no payments the first quarter or even the second quarter last year, and then this year, we have a full year. On the revenue side, switch my page, just, this also highlights the revenues in terms of dollars change, also comparing to budget and compared to prior year. What I'd like to point out here is, again, you can see the sales tax revenue coming in from the 1.09%. It's an easy explanation for that large change from the prior year. Property tax, I attribute the decrease in property tax to timing. It just depends on when property taxpayers pay their property tax and when we receive those revenues. Looking at the bottom line, you can see that total, we're at 24% of revenue, projected revenues for the budget. 25% way through the year, 24%. I would also offer up that as far as sales tax goes, the majority of our sales tax comes in December, so, you know, sales tax, which is our largest source, brings, skews that number down, down a little bit compared to where we're at a year. So it's, again, a timing issue also. Our sales tax also increases in the summer months through, because of tourism. But those sorts of things are what's explained in this report. Then, the last thing that I present for each fund is the summary, the fund summary, kinda showing you where we're at at the beginning of the year, the summarized numbers for revenue and expenditures. In this case, you can see, as of the first quarter, year-to-date, our ending fund balance is 7.3 million compared to our projected ending fund balance of 702,000 now. And then it also shows the fund balance designations with unrestricted on the side at about 6.8 million. And I comment in the, in the report that the 6.8 million unrestricted amount, that is definitely gonna be drawn down because we're doing this Aquatic Center project, and that will draw down that unrestricted on the side. But as of this quarter, that's where it's at. Then the report discusses Streets Capital Improvement Fund, and again, the sales tax is the primary source for this, for this fund. And then you can also see the expenditures, and again, on the expenditure side, it's timing. Capital projects ramp up as we move into the winter months. And a summary of the Streets Capital Improvement Fund, where we're at for a year-to-date fund balance, at 422,000. Again, that number, as the season moves on, will get closer to the budgeted amount. Water Utility Fund, you can see a little bit more broken down in terms of revenues, but again, it's compared to budget and also the prior year. Something that jumps out on the revenue side are water operations, $39,000 lower than last year, and, which is a 14% decrease. Speaking with the utilities director, that is definite, or it matches up with less consumption that's being seen. Water is not being used like it was in last year. It's reduced. But on the capital side, we've had more taps this year. On the expenditure side, say, it's, you know, pretty normal. Again, timing issues may come into play as far as payroll, and also with capital outlay projects getting started as the weather warms up. Again, a summary of the fund as a whole, looking at, at the end of the first quarter, 2.6 ending fund balance. On the wastewater utility fund, pretty much the same analysis as far as revenues go. Again, the report has, has more details. You can also see that there was debt proceeds budgeted in 2017. You know, at the time when I was preparing the budget, I'll just say this, about the $8 million, we've already received that money, so, but being new, I didn't quite pick that up, and it's in there, but, so you won't be seeing any revenue coming in, in debt proceeds because we've already received it. Same explanations on the expenditure side, it's primarily payroll timing as well as capital project timing. And then there's a summary for the wastewater utility fund. And there are a couple other funds that are discussed in the financial report, the DDA or Downtown Development Authority, Grants Funds, and also the Debt Service Fund. Debt Service Funds, you'll see that there are really no activity yet because payments are not due until maybe, maybe, I think I have a couple in this quarter, the second quarter, and so you'll see more activity on the Debt Service Funds, the Grants Funds. We have one grant, and that's the Vail. See the analysis in there for the Vail grant, and the Bill of Generation is also in there. And of course, the DDA is discussed in the financial report. So with that, are there any questions? Oh, I also wanna say that this will be presented or put on the website following tonight's presentation, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them now, or if there's something I can't answer, I'll go back, dig into the details, and come back with an answer.
We know that you got a tremendous amount of information here.
Yes.
And we also know that after you study, you may have more questions, so this isn't your only chance to ask questions as we go into the next meetings or through the next weeks and months. If you have questions, get ahold of Mike or I.
And I wanna thank Val and whoever else, leadership in this regard. We haven't had this before. I think it's a great resource, and you did a great job, Mike, so, thanks very much. I know, I know that's time-consuming, but it helps all of us, and thanks to you, Val, for that. Noel, does that mean you are next?
That means I requested it.
I'm sorry.
That's true.
Noel?
I'd like to give myself a little credit, too. I've always done this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. You've always done it.
I, that was on my work plan with, with coming in here.
Our goal was to, the goal here was to look for any red flags through the year where our budget was, where certain line items were over or under.
Right.
This doesn't line item, but this is, I mean, I guess my question, thank you very much for doing this. We're not gonna be inundated with questions when we get the final budget, or the lead-up to the final budget, but do, putting this together, did you see any red flags that make the auditors might find?
The auditors, this is a financial report, it's a mid-year financial report. Auditors are looking at if we're presenting things accurately, fairly, and are representing everything. So this, this is an unaudited report. It's too early in the year to tell.
No, no, I understand that part. I'm just saying that this way, when, if you do this every quarter, when the auditors do come in, it'd be squeaky clean.
That's correct.
I think it will be. I have faith in you.
My takeaway is get rid of low-flush toilets.
One of the things I would say, Council, is as you look at this, and Mike brought this concept to us, we just didn't have a chance to get one to you until now, but as you look at this, if it doesn't answer your questions, push a little harder, let us adjust this. This is the standard format that he's used in past places and past years. He didn't identify any red flags to me. It's all in the matter of timing.
Of course.
But if you look at this and it doesn't answer a question that you have, or you see something that causes you concern, please let us know.
Mayor and Council, just, just one thing that, that is pointed out in the report that I didn't mention tonight is that, and you've heard it already before, is the E911 funding. We had budgeted for $170,000 expecting that. We heard that, that was a likelihood and possibly even more, but in February, we were notified by the 911 Board that there was not gonna be funding for 2017. So that's, that's one thing that I, that I see on here as, you know, I wouldn't call it a red flag in terms of auditing or budgeting. It's something that we definitely need, are aware of and need to consider as we go forward.
Just, just get rid of one of your printers. I think that'll, that'll be the 170,000.
Does this timing work for you? See, we're about six weeks after the quarter is finished.
Yes. And I, and I say that only because of, I like, in a quarterly report, I like to report three months' worth of data, and our revenues are, which is our taxes, that are our biggest source of revenue. We don't receive those until the month following, which are, we start receiving, it's due April 20, or 20th. We don't receive all of it until the end of the month. So that means, you know, if I, giving me until the second meeting in the following month, it would be either between six and eight weeks, depending on where the first council meeting is and the second falls. So it would be between, be anywhere, the 15th and the 21st of the month following, the end of the quarter, actual end of the quarter.
Yes.
I understand.
I thought that through, that's why I was...
I think we should continue this council meeting until we clear the audience. Look at this.
I don't think these five are going anywhere. Anything else, Council? Before we leave, I just, I've got a comment, since I get to be the last to speak today on Paul, and what you said. It would be nice, but I don't think it's reasonable to think. We address a lot of difficult issues. We are not gonna agree all the time. There will be, in leadership, all of us, it is uncomfortable, but conflict sometimes provides great resolution. And the approach, I think, should be this, Paul. I don't like what happened tonight with the Verge. As you all know, I'm not in favor, but I will support. And to me, that's the bottom line. If you support, you don't have to like the outcome. We all wanna be right. I wanna get it right. And with seven or eight of us together, we're gonna get it right. But there's gonna be conflict along the way, I'm sorry. I don't like it. The more I'm in this position, the more I see the value of it. But trust me, Val and I can have lunch, Tanner and I can have lunch. He'll probably text me and yell at me for a while and then say, "I love you" or something. But the point is, we're all here to do the best for the community, but we're gonna have different approaches, we're gonna have different ideas on things, and there will be disagreements. How we handle those is what's gonna define us. This meeting's adjourned.